Call this meeting to order. For all those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our opening prayer will be led by Councilmember Campbell.
God, we come to you in prayer. We just thank you for this community. We thank you for seeing how they all came together last week and your protection through the storms. And thank you for being with the Public Works employees. And we just thank you for your protection and pray that you'll just be with this body tonight. And we just give you all the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start off tonight with some proclamations. First off, we will have Republic City Employee Appreciation Week. Republic City Employee Appreciation Week, whereas the employees of the City of Republic are the heart of our organization, upholding the mission, vision, and values of our city through their daily work and consistently striving to do the right things at the right time for the right reasons. And whereas, these dedicated public servants bring professionalism, compassion, and integrity to a wide variety of roles, from public safety and maintaining infrastructure, to delivering meaningful processes, goods, and services, and enhancing the quality of life for all who live, work, and play in our community. And whereas, their commitment to excellence in ethical service plays a vital role in building trust with the public, strengthening our community, and ensuring that our city continues to grow in a responsible and caring manner. Whereas, Republic City Employee Appreciation Week is a time for us to pause and recognize the incredible efforts of our team, those who work both in the spotlight and behind the scenes, to keep our city running smoothly and with purpose. And whereas, this week is an opportunity for our entire community to celebrate the contributions of our staff, to honor the pride they take in their work, and to express our sincere gratitude for their role in shaping a bright and vibrant future for Republic. Now therefore, I, Eric Franklin, Mayor of the City of Republic, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through the 9th, 2025, as Republic City Employee Appreciation Week. In testimony whereof, I hereunto set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Republic the sixth day of May, AD 2025. So thank you to all of the City of Republic employees that do all of this excellent work for all of us here and help us as council to do our job and help everything go smoothly for the citizens when they're depending on us for those services. So thank you very much. Moving on to our next proclamation. Do we have anyone here this evening from Head Start? Would you mind coming up to the podium? Or was that, would that be okay? Sorry, I meant to get to you before the meeting. I was just getting a little bit behind. Would you mind giving us your name, please?
Kimberly Shin Brown. I'm the Program Director for OKAC Head Start and a resident of Republic.
Welcome, Kimberly. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We appreciate that. Our next proclamation will be for Head Start Day. Whereas, Head Start has served young children and their families since its founding in 1965, offering a strong foundation for learning and growth through early childhood education, health nutrition, and family engagement. And whereas, for six decades, Head Start has helped open doors for countless children by supporting their development during their most formative years. And whereas, the success of Head Start is made possible by the dedication of its educators, staff, families, and volunteers who work together to nurture children's potential and prepare them for lifelong learning. And whereas, the Head Start program in the City of Republic has been a valued part of our community, helping families thrive and supporting the well-being of our youngest residents. Whereas, as we celebrate the 60th anniversary of Head Start, we honor the spirit of collaboration, care, and opportunity that defines the program and its lasting contributions to our city. Now therefore, I, Eric Franklin, Mayor of the City of Republic and the State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim May 18th, 2025, as Head Start Day. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Republic the sixth day of May, 2025. And I would like to go ahead and present this to you, if that's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Sure. I'm ready for a ballgame.
We'll be quick. Is this okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Enjoy the ballgame. All right. Thank you so much, everyone. Now, we will move on to the election of the Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, I am going to open up the floor. Does anyone have any nominations for Mayor Pro Tem? Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Eric Gurkey.
Okay, we have a nomination for Councilmember Gurkey. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing that there are none, do I have a motion and a second for appointment of Councilmember Gurkey as Mayor Pro Tem?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to citizens' participation. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak directly to council on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Out of respect to everyone who is giving their time here this evening, we ask that you keep comments concise and focused, and that we maintain mutual respect. We will open it up for citizens' participation. We do have one card this evening. It's Ms. Roller. Would you like to come up to the podium, please? And if you wouldn't mind to state your name, your address?
Can I do this first? I made a copy, and I didn't make one for everybody. I made one that you guys can pass around. But this is what I'm wanting to address this evening.
Okay.
For the project that's going on in front of our home. My name is Lisa Roller. I live at 6618 West Farm Road 182 in Republic, Missouri. I'm here to address council tonight. I did email Mayor Franklin. Thank you for getting back to me. I looked up the agendas tonight, and for some reason, your meeting was not on there. The only thing that showed was the 20th, so thank you for getting back to me and let me know that I was able to speak tonight. My cares and concerns are that the Schuler Creek Trail extension that's coming out on 182, I feel like we've had lack of communication with Republic Builds. JD Wallace has been absolutely wonderful, very nice crew. They've, you know, they've been back and forth. We've discussed things. They've been real good with us. We've had lack of communication with Republic Builds. It's been back and forth with Karen Haynes for the past six months with the contractors and with us. They were, when we went from the beginning, we had Andrew Nelson, Brian Die. Andrew took another job. Brian Die got fired. Then we got Sam. Sam disappeared and got fired. Now we got stuck with Angel, which he is here tonight. He's been very nice. And I just feel like there's been no communication. So now here we are with the pictures I'm showing you, Mr. Cameron. There was a slab that was poured. And mind you, we didn't get a knock on the door, a phone call, nothing. We woke up to a 14-foot and 1/2-inch opening for a slab for field entrance. It's not where we agreed for it to go. We wanted it to be either angled or come down against the fence row with our new fence. That was agreed upon with Brian Die. We've been through so many people. Republic Builds has been a revolving door. So we've had more participation and communication and action down there from the things that I'm showing you guys tonight for what's went in, because now we're down to the wire, and JD's telling them, we don't have time to come back and fix what they should have done right in the first place. So my cares and concerns are on the pictures that you're looking at. There is a lane there that we've had access to our back 10 acres, which is actually my brother-in-law's property. It was a 40-acre farm, got broke up into 10 point-whatever acres between brothers and sisters. There is a curb that they poured. If you can look at the picture, the concrete goes from my driveway where they put the apron on. They poured straight across, and the curb is coming right in 20-foot into the opening to the lane, which is then going to cause my brother-in-law problems with his farm equipment, tractors, balers, all of that, to have to jump that curb to get into our opening for the 10 acres on the backside of the property. We've brought this to Stephanie's attention. Finally, somebody called me back and actually came out, per my husband's request, on Friday to see what the problem was. Well, today, they've been all over it, so I don't know if they've rectified the situation. Nobody's bothered to contact us back. They may do that tomorrow. I'm bringing it to council because this is my only chance to let you guys know what's going on. Okay? And also, on the slab that you're looking at there that is supposed to be a field entrance for farm equipment, for balers, 24-foot trailers, tractors, and all of that, it measures out to 14-foot 1-1/2-inch opening. It should have been 16. There should have been an apron put on there. I'm no contractor, but it needs to have the, it needs to be cut back to the expansion joints there on each side or pour an apron in. That was my concern. Plus, we live on the curb that's out there, the curb that comes around right in front of our house. And leaving that what it is now without an apron or anything being fixed on that, and should have asked us how we wanted it in the first place. Nobody bothered. We just woke up, and there was the slab. Didn't ask us where we wanted it. It was just there. So having to turn in or coming out, we're going to have to be turning into oncoming traffic, and that curb is right there. It's already dangerous enough for us to be able to go get our mail, but now we've got to worry about kids riding on a bike trail and tractor-trailers and all that coming in. There's not enough room for that to happen. We drive a four-door Chevy truck with a full bed, and we're running up over the curbs just trying to get turned in from the other side. So that's one of the concerns. Okay, another thing, brought this Stephanie's attention, too. We already have people, guys, the road's closed on both ends for construction. We've already got people trying to ride this trail. I woke up yesterday. There was a set of grandparents that was down there. I've got kids riding out in the middle of my hayfields and in the dirt where it's, there's an embankment there where that culvert comes down. It's a long drop-off. We have no barrier fences up because construction is still going on. That, in my opinion, the road's closed. Nobody should be coming through there on bikes, walking, nothing else. Then we had another guy come with a dog off a leash. We have free-range chickens out there, guys. And I did talk to Stephanie about that. She said there is a law in Republic that dogs have to be on a leash. I said, is that law going to follow coming out to the county? Because we have free-range chickens. We're farmers. We're not somebody that lives in the city that we want to go ride our bike and walk our dogs and not have it on a leash because I've got wolves on my property, and they've got chickens. We've got chickens. The neighbors have got chickens. I mean, right now, we're looking at the farm owners out here, liability. If somebody gets hurt riding their bikes or falls off an embankment, where's the liability fall with that? Because the road is closed. And we're concerned because someone's going to end up getting hurt out there before this gets accomplished. So where do we go with that? That was another concern of ours. Was the dog leash rule coming outside to the county, if that's going to follow? And the liability, and like Stephanie said, people shouldn't be out there. I said, well, Republic obviously didn't get the memo because they're already trying to ride the trail. You know, so that was my cares and concerns tonight, guys. And like I said, they've been out there a few times this evening before they all left, so they might have came up with a solution to the situation with the pictures I brought in. I don't know, but I wanted to bring it to you guys' attention, so if I didn't get a chance, this was my chance.
Sure, sure. No, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention tonight, Ms. Roller. And I appreciate you coming here and sharing that with the entirety of council tonight. Do we have any updates or anything we can provide on that, Mr. Cameron?
Not today.
And so we don't necessarily have any good answers for you tonight, but...
Angel?
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Angel, at...
Mr. Mayor. We were out there this afternoon just to take a look at Ms. Roller's concerns. We're aware of the access easement to the east of her property that we are trying to provide access to. So we're, right now, there's an ADA curb that was placed, and it should be outside of that access easement. So that's something that we're kind of looking to rectify. And some of these items that were presented tonight weren't actually provided on the design plan, so it's something that, you know, it's as part of an ongoing construction project is something that you're, you're kind of forced to construct in the field. Sometimes the contractor is able to work that out in the field. We'll be looking at this situation more closely. I know we're coming to close with the project, so we are, you know, working with the time constraint, so.
Mr. Cameron?
So I know what you're saying. Well, I'll try to add color to this now. I understand what you're saying. So because it was a grant, we cannot deviate from the plans. However, when we close out the project, if there is a turning radius issue out there, our street crew could go out there then and take in there and re-pour the, or set the curb where you have a larger turning radius. So there's probably some provisions that we could do as a city after the fact that it was not allowed to do it in the grant. So it's probably in the design plans. I don't know that for a fact, but I know this, that if there is some turning radius or it was not, it's offset, it doesn't mean we can't go out there and saw-cut it and make improvements after the fact.
Can I speak for a second? I know they were out there this afternoon. That's fine. And I understand what you're saying with the grant money. I mean, in our community, we want to go back to the grant money. They marked no on their application for OTO for condemnation proceedings, but yet here we are with condemnation. So we don't even want to go down that route. As far as what you're talking about with your grant and cutting back with the city, I was told by surrender today that with the contractor there, Tim from the contracting office, JD Wallace, they are in a time crunch right now. The papers are coming out Thursday, and this is what I meant, with lack of communication with Karen Haynes, Stephanie, and all of the supervisors that they went through like a revolving door. Nobody knew what the other person was doing. And now that we're timed to pay, now everybody's on crunch time, and Tim's already said, they don't have time to come back and regrade to add six inches to that, to pull that curb back, to cut it back to the expansion joint where it should have been. And you said the same thing. It is in the middle of our access getting into the lane.
Part of it, yes.
For my post is going, for my fence. So my concern is, at this point, is the project's going to get finished up, and then Republic's not going to come back out and do what they promised, and we're just going to be stuck with what we're stuck with. And the reason why the slab wasn't into the contract with you guys is because this was added on when Brian Die and Andrew Nelson came from Olsons over to work for Republic Builds. This has changed so much that they've had to add to the project. They can't not give us access to our farmland, that we had to have access for our tractors and trailers. They took that convenience away from the four brothers and sisters when they put the trail in, because now Nancy's having to do something totally different with her access to the shared driveway with Susan, when we used to come in that way to have everything hayed together.
Ms. Roller, I really appreciate that. It sounds like right now, staff is definitely working on this and looking for some, to add some clarity to this. It's definitely on all of our minds here on City Council. It's on my mind as the mayor as well. And so altogether, you know, this is be a process together in learning what staff brings for us, is what occurred in the solution. I understand your frustrations with the turnover. But at this time, you know, we don't have every answer tonight. I appreciate your concerns in relaying those to staff and council. And so from this point, we'll let staff do their work on getting an answer and then relaying that back to council and keeping this in the circle of communication and see if we can improve that process a little bit.
And at this point, Angel, will you give Stephanie the memo?
We all work together, yes, yes.
All right. I appreciate that.
We will work better at that. And thank you, Ms. Roller, very much for coming this evening. And thank you, Angel. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Do we have any additional citizens here this evening for public citizens' comments? Is that a yes?
We've got the wrong address. I think we were at the police department.
Okay.
I don't know.
No worries. If you've got that, yeah. No, if we could have that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead and bring that up to us. You're perfect. We're perfect. And if you wouldn't mind, go ahead and state your name, your address for the public record, and then three minutes, turns with council.
Janie Combs, 406 West Barcelona in Republic.
Go ahead.
Okay. My question is, there's been a lot of talk about the water increase in the bill every month, and I needed to understand, why is Republic's water so much more expensive than surrounding areas? I've heard a lot of rumors, but I kind of like to hear it from the horse's mouth, so.
Sure. So your question is just more or less on the increase in water rates?
Yes. And what I've heard is that years ago, there was a sewage plant that was going to be built, and I don't know if it got voted down or what, but it's on a hill and the water has to go.
We've got Mr. Cameron, the expert here.
Okay, okay. But yeah, it's...
Best summary on our water that you could ever ask for.
I just want to be able to give correct information to people.
Mr. Cameron?
Thank you. And I appreciate that you want to get accurate information, because it is a very difficult message to share, because you don't want to talk about the past so much.
Yeah.
But in 1997, there were three referendums. So they were trying to build the wastewater plant on the south side of town, which is, which would have flowed, because it flows downhill. It was turned down. So the plant had to be built, or is expanded where it's at, which is on the top, the highest point, which is over by the elementary schools. So it has to be pumped almost nine times at different locations. So the pump stations that it takes to move that much wastewater have to be substantially bigger. So part of the $150 million project we're working on, almost, I think, 20 million of that was just in pumping, just to pump it to the plant. So it's not, that's not typical completely. Cities have lift stations, but not the size of some of the ones that Republic has. So what Republic did is they had to raise their rates. So Republic sewer rates have always historically been higher than most people to cover the cost of that construction. What the city chose to do during those seasons was not to raise water rates and keep them somewhat lower, substantially lower. And so what's happened over the years is the water kind of got put on the back burner to pay for the old plant. Well, the old plant deteriorated and was in a compliance order with DNR, which means, we were on the naughty list. Basically, we were getting threatened with, not threatened, because we deserved them. We weren't meeting their criteria. They were wanting to find the city, so we came under a compliance order to address that. That meant the number one priority was taking care of the sewer system. So the water has been, I wouldn't say neglected, because it does a fantastic job, but there's a lot of updates, water towers. There's about $110 million worth of improvements over 17 years, but the city had to borrow the money. So our borrowing capacity, so the reason why they're so much higher is we're paying cash for that, not borrowing the money. So we got to build cash like you would in your own home, but it is substantially higher. Otherwise, we'd go issue debt for that, but because the wastewater plant was $150 million, we borrowed that much money. We have gotten $50 million from the state of Missouri. Hopefully, we'll get 25 million more. That'll help in those efforts, but still, it's playing catch-up from 1997.
Okay, in 1997, was that a referendum voted for by the citizens?
By the people.
By the people, okay.
They did not want, they did not want, they did not want...
That's what I heard, too.
They did not want it in their backyard. And so, and I'm not here to say one way or the other, but yeah, in my office, someone brought me a sign that shows vote no, and I keep it to remind, like, that was a decision to put it there. And it's, the exponential cost to replace that infrastructure on that hill is expensive. Now, I will tell you this. From another perspective, long-term for the City of Republic, I think the plant is in the best spot it can be, because it flows to Stockton Lake, not Table Rock Lake. There's two different criteria for how water has to be treated to go to Table Rock versus going to Stockton. Long-term, it's probably better, but in the short term, what it costs, it's expensive.
When you say short-term, how long will that be?
For the plant itself? Well, the good news is, the plant itself, is the citizens are getting $150 million asset replacing all the infrastructure that was not working. So the good news is, hopefully, we get some more money, but even then, the state's giving us $50 million. I think we'll get, I think we'll get closer to it. So we're actually getting $150 million asset for $75 million when it's done. So I think the short-term of it is, short-term is, I guess, I don't know if that's the right term I would use, but I think it's got a long-term impact from an environmental compliance perspective that the citizens will not have to deal with, that I believe they would have had to deal with if it went down to Table Rock Lake. They call it watershed analysis studies. And I'd be more than happy to sit down and just completely geek out on this for hours with you.
Okay, yeah.
Because I got a very strong opinion about it. Like, I believe it's good, but it's expensive fix, but I think long-term, everyone around us is going to start to feel the same pain for the cost of it.
So we're looking at a long time to pay this off? Long time of water increases?
No, what we did, great question. So the water rate increases were elevated over a three-year period to get to build the cash over a longer period of time. So it is, the first three years is definitely like what I tell people. It's like being in an airplane and going straight up. But it's like to build the cash versus borrowing money and leveraging it out for 30-some years, it would put the city at almost, what, I don't want to use, I'd hate to even speculate what the percentage of our debt-to-income ratio would be if we borrowed the $100 million to do it all right now. We don't need to do it all right now. So if we build cash and we can roll the rates back, there's probably more chance of relief of not having to keep escalating them so much. But there was never even like an inflationary cost, cost of living. I mean, any, CPI was never adjusted over a period of time. And I understand why the city did it, because it was hard to explain that they were paying higher rates for the sewer for all those years. So keep the water low, so it'd be a little bit better. But if you don't take care of one, you're going to end up paying for it, too.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you, David. And Ms. Hobbs, it's, it's hard to get all of that into a three-minute conversation. Did you say you had one last thing?
Just one more.
One last thing?
Yes, yes. About the water park. That takes a lot of water. Who's paying for that water?
So...
Us, or...
So that's a great question. So this year, one of the changes we made, because historically, the water park water was free. And so what we did in this year's budget, we're like, listen, patrons that use the water park, it's included now. So when the rates went up at the water park, and they heard it's to cover the water rate increase, because they're paying their water bill to utilize that space now.
Okay, so the citizens are not paying for the water park?
We had that very internal discussion, like, the rates are going up. We have to make sure that every department...
Yeah, I just, those were two things I was concerned about. Okay.
Does that give you a little bit of clarity there?
Yes. And I may take you up on the water thing.
Yeah, that's a really good one.
Some research.
Yeah, I would, I could geek out on it for a while.
Okay, okay.
Seriously. They'll get me started talking in here, they'll say, just lie. We don't hear about it.
But it's a good subject, so.
It is a great subject, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a lot of people are upset about it. And before I open my big fat mouth, I need to have the information to, give the correct information.
Absolutely.
Because a lot of people are very upset about it.
And also feel free to reach out to your council members and to the mayor as well, even if we need to meet before a meeting sometime for a little bit of clarity, too. David's the best on it, but a lot of us, this is a long conversation, so there's a lot of questions, I know, but any amount of clarity we can add, we certainly will. So thank you very much for...
One question, is the meeting always here?
Yes.
So we are here from now on, yes.
Okay, okay. Because it's in two different places, where it's at the police station in here.
It should on the top of our agenda. The top of our agenda has the address, so...
The line.
But from now on, as long as you come here, yeah, you'll be good. So thank you very much for coming here this evening. Do we have any additional citizens here this evening that would like to speak? Seeing that there is none, I'm going to close citizens' participation. I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items number three through six on the agenda. No questions or comments. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to board, commission, and committee schedule. Planning and zoning meeting will be May the 12th, 2025. We will have a city council work session May the 13th, 2025 at 11:00 a.m., a city council meeting May the 3rd, May the 20th, 2025, a city council meeting June the 3rd, 2025, and a board of adjustment meeting on June 5th, 2025. Moving on to old business and tabled items. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-12 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
Ordinance of the City Council approving the annexation of approximately 9.9 acres of property located at 4297 South Wilson's Creek Boulevard and adjacent right-of-way.
Do we have any questions, comments, discussion from city council before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 25-12, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries 800. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-13 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving the final plat of Harper Ridge Phase An ordinance of the city council approving the final plat of Harper Ridge Phase 3 subdivision.
Thank you, Laura. We've got Patrick Ruiz here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening, Patrick Ruiz, Associate City Planner. The city of Republic has received an application from Bestor Properties LLC for the final plat of Harper Ridge Phase 3. The final plat will divide approximately 7.6 acres of land into 21 medium density single-family residential lots. It will also convey the dedication of right of way, utility, and stormwater easements to the city. Included with the final plat is approximately 1,592 linear feet of new street and 1,479 linear feet of new sidewalk. Harper Ridge Phase 3 conforms to the preliminary plat of Emerald Valley Phase 2 that was approved by city council on October 26, 2021. In addition, this final plat conforms, conforms to the requirements of the city code chapter 410 subdivision regulations and Article 5 major subdivision final plat. Based on this information, city staff recommends approval of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Seeing there are none, do we have any citizens here this evening that are commenting on this agenda item? Seeing that there are none, pursuant to 3.10 F of the charter, staff is requesting the second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. I now need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-13 to be held during tonight's meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-13 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving the final plat of Harper Ridge Phase 3 subdivision.
Does city council have any questions or comments this go round? Seeing that there are none, we will move on to final passage. I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 25-13, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries 800. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number 10, 25-R-18. A resolution of the city council authorizing the purchase of two replacement vehicles for the Parks and Recreation Department Maintenance Division. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 25-R-18, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and we've got Brad Stolcy here to give us an overview this evening. Did I pronounce that correctly?
It's Stolz.
Stolz.
Yes.
I will get that right next time.
No problem. Good evening. In 2024, the Parks Department received a grant through the Green County Municipal Project Grant Program in the amount of $64,285. The original intent of the grant was to construct a dog park on a parcel of land recently donated to the city, which was to be named the Joshua Morris Park. Upon further planning and coordination with the builds department, it was determined that the donated land is located within a FEMA designated flood zone, which prohibits the, the installation of permanent fencing structure. As a result, the location is unsuitable for a dog park, and no alternative locations are currently available at this time. So we will continue to evaluate different locations for a future location for the dog park. As an alternate, the city staff contacted Green County to discuss the possibility of repurposing the grant funds for an alternate eligible project. Approval was received to reallocate the $64,285 grant for the purchase of two replacement vehicles for the Park Maintenance Division to upgrade its aging fleet. The total cost for the two vehicles is $79,015. The remaining $14,730 required beyond the grant allocation will be covered through the Parks Fund. The two new vehicles purchased are a 2025 vehicle Ford F-150 and a 2025 Ford Ranger. Both will be purchased from Corwin Ford Republic through a state cooperative purchasing contract, and the new vehicles will be replacing a 2001 Ford F-250 and a 1999 Ford Ranger. Based on this information, staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Stolz.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Awesome. I'm just impressed that someone around here drives a truck older than mine, so yeah. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Not anymore, though. I'm a little bit jealous now. Well, maybe. So no questions, no comments from city council.
The old vehicles, what are we going to do with the old vehicles?
They will be surplused.
Might be able to buy more of those.
Might be stepping on up, yeah. I look, mayor look good in that. Any additional questions from council? Seeing that there are none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. And I understand that item number 11 will be presented for council's next workshop, and so it is being removed from tonight's agenda. Discussion on this item will take place on the 5/13 city council workshop at 11 o'clock right back here at the builds. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate the comments we have from the, from the community tonight. It's always good to hear and, and receive feedback. It's always fun to be able to, to talk about the water rates. Not necessarily fun, but it's also at least to have information and provide it. So I'm, I'm very grateful for, for the folks that showed up to, to do that. Also wanted, you know, it's, it's employee appreciation week, and I want to talk about that. But also, you know, it's, one thing that is not lost on me in talking to the mayor today is that y'all, the, the council and the mayor, y'all have jobs. It's not something that you do all the time. And trying to do the roles that you have in between that and the service at this level can be difficult to juggle at times. And so I do appreciate the work that goes in to, for what we do to get these meetings ready so that we're trying to be swift and able. So when there's questions or concerns, it's nice we have work sessions now that we could actually just say, I just table it, we'll put it on a work session because that's what we're trying to work on. So, but I do, I, I, it's not lost on me that there's, there's a day job that you do, like, it's not a high paying position to be on council, and people don't like it with the water rates, and I understand, or there's different things that take place, and there's a lot that goes with it. So thank you for your service to serve the staff and to serve the community. I really do mean that. It's, 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 uh, it's, it's not always easy, but it's, it's much appreciated. So to the employees for Employee Appreciation Week, I get an opportunity a lot to share with different places why I do what I do. And I look back to when I was a wastewater operator, which is why I geek out on it. But also remember, like I tell people, you know, a lot of people don't do Easter egg hunts down at a wastewater plant. You don't do a lot of tours, or you don't do a lot of, people come to see what you do, and sometimes it gets overlooked and underappreciated. And what I love about Employee Appreciation Week is that there's not a soul, there's not a person in this, in this organization that has not got a value to what we do from the people that, you know, you walk through this building, you'll see a lot of the pictures of the men and women that do the job every day. And then you walk around, you look at it from storm cleanup. I'm reminded of the ice storm, or not the ice storm. Last year, it was zero degrees, and we had a snapped water main down on, off the highway, and just seeing our crews out there at zero degree weather. We don't say it enough, I don't say it enough, to our, to our public safety when it's horrible temperatures. It's just, it's not always easy. And so, and it's sometimes just not always recognized or appreciated, but I appreciate that we stop and appreciate the employees of the city and the work that they do because it, it really is, you, you take the mission, vision, and values to a whole new level. And I get to see that, and I know that. And why we're standard bearers is because we've taken our mission, vision, and values very seriously. I love the fact that I guarantee you somewhere, the mayor has in his packet.
Mission, vision?
He'll ha, this thing is tattered, but I think this means a lot that the mayor of our city, who's, ever since he's been a council member, actually adopts this as part of his discussion. And every time he comes into my office to see me, he pulls this out because he holds me accountable to it. But I do appreciate the mayor recognizing the employees, and I appreciate y'all's recognition because I, I know that a number of you reach out to us on a routine basis saying thank you for what we do, and that is much appreciated. Also, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Please check in on your family and friends that you suspect might be struggling. It's okay not to be okay. I got a chance to speak about this at the Think Summit. I've not been, I've never hidden the fact that the mental health struggle that, that has gone in my family, my own life. I got to meet with an individual yesterday that's just reached out to me and struggling, just in general, just want to talk. And I think it's important that when we live in a county that 52%, of males 25 to 62, have considered suicide or had a thought of it in the last year, asking somebody if they're doing okay is the right thing to do. And so checking in on your strong friends, even myself, it's important. I had somebody check in today, say, David, how you doing? Just checking on you. Because sometimes we, you can hide it well. And so I just, I, I would encourage you. Sometimes you think about texting somebody just to check on them. Take the extra time just to do it. You never know what it's going to do for their, their life. I know what it does for me. So, wow. So check on your friends. It only takes just a second. We heard a thing at Think Summit where the young man got up and told a story that he'd been going to counseling, but his best friend had killed himself. And he had no idea he was struggling, too. So it just takes a little bit of time to ask somebody if they're doing okay. So always remember that some people are struggling whenever you don't see it. So stormwater concerns, I'm going to jump from one topic to the next now. Stormwater concerns. Don't call me on that. No, just kidding. Brookside Estates and Rankin Acres, we did send out letters to the residents there. We are going to deploy a third party engineering firm to help us with that. Just to keep working on, I know the gentleman, I believe there's someone that showed up at the, at the council meeting asking us about stormwater. I believe he was here again tonight. Again, we appreciate people and citizens coming and talking to us at the meetings. Legislative update, I'm going to, so I have mentioned, I'll say this, there is $10 million for MM that is in the budget. This is the last week, Friday is the last day. By constitution, it has to be adopted, then it's up to the governor for signature. But there is, right now, at present, there is 25 million in the budget for wastewater. There's an additional, the bird wants in. The bird's not happy either.
The meeting is.
But the 10 million for MM Highway, for those that were here, we had a large group. There has been a large contingent in this region that have gone to Jefferson City to advocate for, for $10 million to get that. Originally, it was 6 million. We've got 10 to widen that MM to five lanes. That's, that's, that's a huge win. But if we can get to the governor's signature, hopefully get through, get through budget, and there's still $25 million, that'll be, it'll be another great day for, for Republic in the legislature side. I don't want, I don't want to say anything or jinx it. I just want to say it's in there, and hopefully we'll get through the process and have some good news to report. The ERP update, so it's almost like, Bob, I want you to do this at a workshop, because it's amazing the work that you've done, what you all have done to get this sage, what'd you call it, Project Methuselah?
No, this is Genesis.
At Genesis, okay. Bob's got all the Bible names. But, uh, but it's, it's, with all the savings that, the things that they've been able to generate, I think it's almost a break even from what we're paying now for the software per year. Am I, am I butchering this, Bob? Kinda.
Kinda.
Okay.
We're getting it.
Okay. But I, I'm hiring Cherry Becker. I can't say enough. That was Bob's direction, like, let's go get somebody else to help us. And Cherry Becker delivered in, in incredible way with the products that we're going to have and the things we're going to be able to do in this city. It's very state of the art, very progressive moving forward. So I just want to, you know, looking forward to seeing that. I think there's deployment dates of '25 and '26 of just the timing. I believe it is the, I want to get this backwards. We're going to get the ERP, the ADP, the financials, Sage Intact for the financials and ADP, and then the HR payroll side. So yes, as of right now, we estimate the ADP to be online in 182026. Work session next week, we're going to talk about this Tri-State Water Coalition. Chief Sales and Chief Compton will be talking about our emergency management response. Councilman Bernil, we're going to be talking about liquor licensing discussion. We're also going to add the discussion that was on there tonight for the resolution for CU and the water. Part of our overall discussion about the Tri-State Water was, CU's got a large allocation of water that's a part of that, and asking what is, what potentially be the long range partnership if they have a water treatment plant? So a lot of that's just going to be tying into, like, could we tie into them, or could they tie, or could we tie into each other and save us from having to build four more water towers? I'm talking about 40 years down the road. So that's kind of what that discussion's about. We started kicking the tires of what would be the benefit if we didn't have to build the second tower, if we, if we could help in that way. So that's what the discussion's going to be around next week, at least with Tri-State, because that's a massive decision the city's got to make. Number one, I think it's a massive decision to buy the water allocation, but I think, does the city want to build a water treatment plant, too? A future water treatment plant, raw water lines? And that's why we started, like, what if we partnered with someone to treat the last 2.5 million gallons? So we'll bring that up next week. The Spire Silver Shovel Award. This award recognizes cities for their commitment to safe digging practices. We are proud to receive this honor for the third consecutive year. Yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, so.
Thank you.
We got the Silver Spire Silver Shovel Award. Where's that at?
Right there.
It's over there in the corner.
We should have bought that up.
Another spoon.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Yeah. But I do, I want to say this, this, the, the mayor council, the staff, I got to speak at the chamber today, and just going through the list of projects that we got going on, it is, it's crazy how many things are out there. Iron Grain is getting ready to add another Eagle Stop. So they're going to be, number two is going to be on the corner. Don't ask me why. It's, they, they explained that to us today, but, so they're going to put one out there. It's going to be a little bit different. But yeah, there's some more. The new widening to five lanes will be a, a big game changer for the, for the city and for the region. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Do we have any reports from city council?
I got one.
Gary, go ahead.
I usually don't say a whole lot, but this is Employee Appreciation Month, and I certainly appreciate all the work the employees does. However, no one ever says anything about the work that David has done, and he's done a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Does anyone else have anything that they would like to add to tonight? So I want to echo Mr. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Thank you, staff. And, and yeah, I do carry this around with me everywhere, and even when I'm speaking with other crowds. And last week, I was speaking with the crowd, I call it a crowd. I never grab a crowd, I grab a group, but speaking with this group, and it just happened to include a lot of people from Green County, and they were relaying to me the joy that they have working with all the staff here in Republic, and what a difference it is between working with other people that they've worked for in the past. But they really appreciate, you know, all that work and the effort that the staff puts into that, and it, it makes a huge difference. And especially when I'm talking to people, and then that's the conversation that happens in front of other people, I was glowing all weekend. So thank you for that very much. And yeah, staff appreciation, appreciation for Mr. Cameron and everyone that, that makes our lives, that makes us, makes us look good. I mean, just honestly, that's the best part of being here on city council is, is sitting up here and getting to, to share in all the work of city staff. Thank you for ensuring this, this recent storm, 20 years, I, I've had to huddle in my house twice. And I was actually in Springfield, and I got a little concerned, and I came back to Republic, got my family, and we were in the closet. And I'm not too far from here, so I can imagine what it was like in this building. But yeah, thank you so much for, for Republic on, on getting the trees out of the roads. I know the police department, fire department, and everyone around here played a vital role in that, in making sure that our citizens, citizens could get out. I know there was a power issue, and still praying for everyone around us. There's a lot of areas around us that we were very blessed here in Republic. Been in a lot of areas here recently that we're not as lucky as we are. And so I'm very thankful that I didn't hear of any serious injuries or deaths, but still in recovery efforts. And so I encourage anyone, if you get a chance to go help these people and volunteer your time, please do. There are a lot of people through Springfield, through Green County, and all around us that are seeking volunteers and asking for help. Thank you to Head Start for coming out tonight for the proclamation. I know they've, may have left already, but we appreciate them coming down. We appreciate all the citizens coming down as well and sharing those concerns with the city council. Appreciate the thoughtful discussion at our last workshop, and I'm really looking forward to our next workshop. So that's a, a very great piece, I think, that we've had going on, and it helps build clarity for us in that discussion to the constituency. It was a pleasure this weekend. I know some of us have got, got to go there. I saw some, some people. Maybe if you missed it this time, it was the first annual Art Walk on Main Street. The Republic Main Street events, people have just done a tremendous job on bringing everything down to Main Street. If you're looking for that small town feeling, it was definitely alive this Saturday down on Main Street. There was food, barbecue, there was music, there were people singing, and there was art, art from one end to the other. And it was all local artists here in Republic with a great story. And it led us to later on in that week, and, and I was invited to a birthday party at the senior center. So if you're down at the senior center here, time, anytime in the future, and you look around in the great hall, dining hall, you'll see the pictures around the top. And that's by a, a local resident here. His name is Noah Garut. It was his 92nd birthday on Friday, and, and he made such an impression there on this first art on Main Street and through his 92 years of living, that we were joined by our state representative. He was given a, a letter from the governor in recognition for his hard work. The mayor went down and visited with as well. So great birthday cake, great time going down there, anytime at the senior center. If you see that art.
at the senior center. If you see that art, that is impressive, and it's, it's part of our community. It's part of the stories, and part of the people that, you know, we, we weather these storms with. Other than that, I may have been a little bit long-winded, but thank you for all the hard work that went into tonight's meeting. Thank you to our council. Thank you to our newly sworn-in council member for this evening. It's a pleasure to be seated here with everyone up here. It's a pleasure to be seated with everyone that's here in the audience as well. And so thank you to everyone, and to all a good night. Meeting adjourned.